All right, well, thank you all for coming in early since I know it's particularly troublesome if you're coming in on the 7:05 Red Line Express, Ball Express there, or whatever it is. All right. Yeah, we should probably have the town manager here, unless he quits. Did Mary Ann go to grab him? Or because otherwise I will give him a call. I know it. He opened the door and he falls in, or it opens out. You want to join us? Okay, thank you. He's on his way out, thank you. All right. How are you doing? Good. All right, I think I'm gonna. Did Franny think the meeting was over? No, she left her hat. In the interest of time, I think I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting and we'll move it along slowly. Seeing that it's 7:07 and the fact that we have a quorum, I'm going to open tonight's meeting as we do with every meeting. I would entertain citizens' concerns, as long as it's not already on the agenda to be spoken about, and we do happen to have a citizens' concern. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name's Jim Snyder-Grant from 18 Half Moon Hill. I just wanted to let the board know that this year, Green Acton is planning to have an Acton Cleanup Day. Last year, we missed our opportunity to do that, and I look forward either at some appropriate meeting for you guys to vote, to support it, which in practical terms means having the Highway Department deliver either trucks or trash containers to the four sites. The Acton Cleanup Day this year, we're planning to have on Saturday, May 2nd, from 10:00 to 3:00. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dan. All right.
I have another concern.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you get up there.
That's okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm Graham Nolan from 29 Esterbrook Road. I have lived with my family at that address for 31 years. I am here tonight concerning a rezoning article on the warrant for next month's town meeting. The same article to rezone the Brookside Mall has been on previous town meeting warrants. It has been previously defeated, and it was reintroduced in the fall of 2014 town meeting, when it was withdrawn to allow the mall owner, the mall owner's management company, the Town of Acton zoning board, and a butters an opportunity to resolve several issues. The Esterbrook Road neighborhood's main concern was the mall owner and their management company have never met key requirements of the special use permit of the Town of Acton Selectmen. In an amended decision dated July of 2004, Selectmen again addressed these issues of the original permit. May I pass out? I've only got one copy of this. That basically... That is the amended decision, and in essence, there are three items on that decision. I'm not going to go in order, but probably in order of importance. The first was, in order to mitigate any adverse impact of deliveries and trash pickup, the board finds it is necessary and appropriate to prohibit deliveries and trash pickup before 6:30 and after 10:00 p.m. This requirement has never been met before this amendment was issued, nor afterwards. As recently as Thursday of last week, on the, I believe it's the 19th, a truck, semi-trailer, was seen exiting the service road from onto Esterbrook Road, and that had been making a delivery prior to that at Trader Joe's, which is clearly a violation. The week before that, on Thursday at 5:50, both of these were at 5:50 a.m., they were observed, a trash hauler was seen emptying two dumpsters at the back of, I believe it was either Ann Taylor's or Talbot's. Let me show you. In the back of that packet I gave you are pictures of those dumpsters that were being emptied. I brought those photos is because in an email from the town officials, which is also in that packet that you have, Roland Bartel said that the owner and he were unable to identify the company that was violating that. If you look on the photos of the dumpster, I think you'll see fairly clearly on both dumpsters, the name of the company, the trash hauler is clearly identified, along with a phone number, and also a computer address, web address. I find it difficult to believe that either party could miss that. And you, they said, well, they didn't know whether trash, other trash haulers might have just come by inadvertently and emptied them. I find that very hard to believe, because trash haulers just don't drive down a street and say, hey, I'm gonna empty this dumpster. They don't do that. So clearly, the town and the management company of the mall could easily identify the party that was responsible for doing, you know, the removal prior to hours. The other thing is, in addition to that, we've been bringing this issue up for years and years and years. Every time we tried to get enforcement, we were told that my word was not good enough. I asked for the town to at least get the police department, or whoever, to try to monitor the site, because it seemed like clockwork that the companies came at 5:50. So it shouldn't have been on Thursdays. It shouldn't have been any real secret about when they were coming. Apparently, I asked, has the town ever tried to monitor the site? And the answer is no.
The answer from whom, sir?
The answer from Roland Bartel and others has been no. That it's really up to the victim, I mean, the neighbors, to identify, you know, by video or whatever.
Well, that, I appreciate your input on this, Mr. Nolan. We can't do anything at this meeting, you understand.
I understand that.
Because it's not on our agenda.
But this will be very clear to you what I'm asking for, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second part of this is, this condition shall include all, in all leases for space in the mall hereafter entered into, the requirement of no access prior to 6:30 or after 10:00. I have asked Scott Munch, who is the zoning enforcement official, to whether anybody had, or any official with Acton had asked for that, you know, verification, had asked for the leases to make sure that that had actually been done. I haven't received a reply back, but...
Well, the leases would be private documents, so it isn't as though we would have, we're not entitled to see the lease between the management firm and a tenant.
But how would you be able to verify whether that is actually in there?
By actual fact, if, as you say, somebody's showing up, you know, outside of the window. But they can't, they're not obliged to show us, it's a contract, and they're not obliged to show us the contract, and I'm not sure that that would be the thing that would be the enforcement arm anyway. What would be the enforcement arm is what you're talking about. So it would be irrelevant whether it was in the contract or not, it's their responsibility for enforcement.
But the third item, which is also included...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I don't mean to cut you off, you can certainly keep speaking, but I did receive your email, because I'm the liaison to the planning board, and I sent it to all the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, we've seen that.
So I think we're very familiar with your complaints. Let me just ask you, I know since this was put off at the last town meeting, there have been a number of meetings, I know there was a planning board member who was met with you, met with the management people. I thought everything was resolved until I saw this violation last week. I thought you were on board with supporting the article at this point. I mean, I think the landscape has been, the landscape issues I thought had been addressed, and they were gonna put up video cameras to deal with this issue of the pickup, and I guess the cameras haven't been put up yet, but has that all fallen apart as far as you're concerned now? Is that what you're concerned, you asking us to not support this article? I mean, we voted to recommend it, what's your bottom line here, I guess?
Well, basically, the third item that's required in this is the gate. Since we've been meeting for four months now, that gate also has been inoperable probably 90% of the time. It's inoperable tonight, it's missing the horizontal member completely. I think my issue is, we've had a number of months for the owner or management company to implement things. They have put in the seven trees, which is really very good, and I will say that that was a major step forward. My neighbors and I have looked at that as being a very positive step. But the one thing that we've been told repeatedly is that is they would restrict the service drive access prior to 6:30 a.m. and after 10:00, and that consistently hasn't happened. I don't understand why, over a 12-year period, they've been unable to meet that requirement. And what I'm asking the Selectmen is, without their compliance on these very obvious conditions, why would the town officials recommend putting this into a warrant on a town meeting without any track record of an intent to enforce that requirement or meet it? I guess what I'm asking isn't for this to be removed forever from consideration, I'm asking that it be postponed, at least until the next meeting, in which at least they can implement these things to restrict access, and at least have a few months' track record at meeting it. I don't ask for anything more than that, and I will support it if they're able to accomplish that. I'm not asking for anything new, I'm not asking for any new planting or anything else. Our neighborhood deserves the Selectmen to enforce what they said they would before the mall was built. We're not asking for anything more than that. As far as the cameras that they've agreed to install at the back of the mall, they're only going to monitor the dumpsters. They will not monitor the gate, which is, that means the service trucks, or I should say, the delivery trucks to Trader Joe's and everything, will not be monitored. And I guess what I'm saying is, look, these aren't asking for anything additional to what we already were told the town would enforce. In 12 years, the town has been unable to do that. Is it really asking too much for a neighborhood to say, look, implement these things, show us even a short track record of meeting it, and then go ahead? Because seriously, I will support it at that point, but I can't support it until that is at least accomplished. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nolan. All right. As we, as we do at every meeting, we have our chairman's update, so I will open tonight's chairman's update. I'd like to remind people to come to town meeting beginning in two weeks, April 6th. It's your opportunity to weigh in on what the town and schools spend on their annual budget. I'd also like to ask you to get out and vote at the upcoming local election, next Tuesday, March 31st. Although many of the candidates are running unopposed, that does not mean that they're not signing up to do a lot of work on your behalf, and please support them through your vote. And on that note, since this will be my last televised Selectmen's meeting, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your faith. You've put me in my judgment in the past six years. I've learned a tremendous amount about municipal government in my time as Selectmen. I've listened to and acted on many of the concerns that you've voiced. I've made many friends around town. I also want to thank my fellow Selectmen, thank you for supporting me, thank you for challenging me, and it's been a very good team effort. I came to town politics as a man of faith, wanting to use my gifts, and God blessed me with a leadership position, and I hope to have honored it. It's probably best understood in context of Romans 12:8. If your gift is to encourage others, be encouraging. If it is giving, give generously. God has given you the leadership ability, take the responsibility seriously. And if you have a gift for showing kindness to others, do it gladly. I hope you all feel that I've met this charge and made your government responsive. And now, an update from the town manager. Mr. Manager.
Wow, I don't know how to follow that. I hear an amen. Okay. First of all, I'd like to report that the day after the last Selectmen's meeting, March 10th, I believe it was, Finance Director, the Assistant Finance Director, and myself went to Middlesex Retirement. We had a pre-meeting with the Chairman of the Board, Mr. Gibson, and their actuary, and their Executive Director, Jackie, Jackie Williams, and then we subsequently met with the Middlesex Board. What we have at least worked out, and there's still some, some actions that have to be taken on their part, is back in 2011, we had a mediated settlement with, with Middlesex, which was, had commenced as a lawsuit, lawsuit against Middlesex by the town, and we had a settlement agreement of them paying us $37,500 per year for eight years, and they've made three, or four of those payments. They have agreed by a board vote last week that they will use the balance of that $150,000 to reduce our assessment. They're also, they have to, they have to consult with PERAC, but we had asked, it's about $230,000 of that increased assessment that is based on misclassification of public safety offices as Group 1, as opposed to Group 4. We have asked if they would consider kind of spreading that out over three years, so that we could absorb more of that increase. They agree in principle, but PERAC needs to approve it. In terms of some of the other issues that are related to the Acton Boxborough Assessment, our former, former APS employees, et cetera, they complied with the Freedom of Information Act, they've given us documents about Yethic, we're still walking through that, so we haven't really absorbed all that information yet, but it does appear at least we'll have some, some relief from, from that increased assessment. And there'll be more to come as we digest the Freedom of Information and hear from PERAC in terms of the balance of about $80,000 being spread out over three years. We are also putting together, as we did three years ago, the representatives of all the town unions, as well as the school unions, in some informal coalition bargaining revolving around health insurance. Primary focus of this discussion will be part of the features of the Affordable Care Act, specifically the maximum out-of-pocket expenses which, which are allowable under, which need to be defined under, under the ACA, and that in essence is what the maximum an employee can pay out of their own pockets before, before they don't have to pay any longer. So we are tentatively scheduled to meet with that informal group on, I think, a week from today, and there'll be more on that as, as we proceed. I also want to remind the board that Wednesday night at 7:00, we have, the moderator's holding his kind of annual pre-town meeting, town meeting, to kind of talk about the process, talk about warrant articles, presentations, et cetera. That's at 7:00 o'clock at the public safety facility. And finally, at the next regular Selectmen's meeting, which I believe will be April 27th, I will present to the board a, a plan to reorganize the Municipal Properties Department. This is based on the retirement of Dean Charter effective July 1. Under the charter, I can reorganize departments with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, so we'll be presenting a plan on April 27th. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Next up item on the agenda is the discussion and vote on town manager's contract, as we have in the past. The, after the initial contract term, we have done one-year extensions, and we just came out of executive session to talk about compensation, which we don't have to discuss here, but we do have to discuss and vote on the contract extension itself. So, that being said, I would entertain a motion to extend the contract a year. So, yeah. It goes from July 1st of 2015 to, I mean, yeah, July 1st of 2015 to June 30th.
I thought this was a year. I thought it was like a year.
No, it's, the contract is...
Yeah, it already goes out a year, so I think it's another year beyond that.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
You're already out to 2016.
Right. Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
We should just vote to extend it a year. Unfortunately, Mary Ann, the HR, the HR Director's not here to clarify exactly what the dates are, but yeah.
We threw her out already, so we can't...
No, I think it goes to 2017 now.
I think you're right. Well, anyways, I moved to extend the town manager's contract by one year.
Second?
Okay, we have Katie made the motion, Janet second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, now, town meeting update. We, we kind of made this a, I'll call it a vague description, just because we don't know what issues are still, this is kind of like changing a flat while the car's still moving. So, you know, do you have anything that you need to weigh in on, Mr. Manager, in terms of articles that are dropping, or?
No, I think it's stayed static since our last meeting. It's posted now, so it better stay static.
What's that?
So, Article 22, the pay-as-you-throw, we've been, I've been meeting with Zero Waste off and on for the past couple of weeks, talking about this and, and trying to iron out some of the details and trying to respond to some of the questions that have come up, and there were a couple of things that I just wanted to kind of get the sense of the board on. One of them that we've heard from people that they would be more comfortable if this article was, or if the program was a trial period, considering that the board has to revote the sticker fee or the whatever fees for the program each year, it essentially is a trial period, but I think that's a bit difficult to explain to people, and so if I could just sort of say that it will be a trial period, that we'll reexamine after a year, knowing that we would do that anyways, I just want to make sure that people are comfortable with that language before I just said it without, without other people. So that's one. Another issue is, we've talked a little bit about potentially doing some free bags for seniors or for people in need, and so just, I wanted to get people's thoughts on that. I know Corey's run some of the numbers, we'd have to work it out more, but I thought it would be worth just seeing how people felt about that issue as well. I think those were the, the main ones.
Okay. Any thoughts? Janet?
I'm fine with the idea of, of saying that we're prepared to try it as a trial. I have some concerns about the giving, sort of providing allowances for people, people in need. I don't know how you're gonna, it just, I don't, it's just a complication, it could make it really cumbersome, I think, and the senior pricing, I get the impression is taking into consideration the, the fact that income is often limited. I mean, it's $10 proposed for the sticker fee, which is almost nothing, but I'm that, so I have reservations. I feel as if just the much-produced sticker fee is pretty low, pretty generous, and my concern about sort of tinkering with the pricing for the bags or whatever, or just making them free, is then how do you know? And not, not that we have people who will exploit it, but, you know, I just don't know. I worry about... seven hundred and forty-six dollars from Seneth Barrier to benefit the TJ O'Grady Memorial Skate Park. Item twelve, accept gift, Acton Nursing Service, um, Town of Acton Employees enclosed a gift totaling two hundred and thirty dollars from the total, uh, from the Town of Acton Employees in memory of Stanley B. Johnson. Uh, item thirteen, committee appointment, Don Wang, full member, Acton Boxborough Cultural Council. And item fourteen, committee appointment, Cecily Houston, full member, Acton Boxborough Cultural Council. All right, seeing that there were no holds...
Moved to approve consent agenda.
All right, we have Janet moved.
Second.
And we have Katie second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, carries unanimously. All right, now, town meeting update. Um, we, we kind of made this a, um, I'll call it a vague description, just because we don't know what issues are still, be, this is kind of like changing a flat while the car's still moving. Um, so, you know, do you have anything that you need to weigh in on, Mr. Manager, in terms of articles that are dropping or?
No, I think it's stayed static since our last meeting. It's posted now, so it had, better stay static.
What's that?
Sorry, I got mine.
Okay.
Um, so, Article twenty-two, the, the pay-as-you-throw, we've been, I've been meeting with Zero Waste off and on for the past couple of weeks, um, talking about this and, and trying to iron out some of the details and trying to respond to, to some of the questions that have come up. And there were, um, a couple things, um, that I just wanted to kind of get the sense of the board on. One of them that we've heard from people that they would be more comfortable if this article was, uh, or if, if the program was a trial period, considering that the board has to revote, um, the sticker fee or the, um, whatever fees for the, um, program each year. It essentially is a trial period, um, but I think that's a bit difficult to explain to people. And so if I could just sort of say that it will be a trial period, that we'll reexamine after a year, um, knowing that we would do that anyways, um, I just want to make sure that people are comfortable with that language before I just said it without, without other people. So that's one. Um, another issue is we've talked a little bit about, um, uh, potentially doing some, um, free bags for seniors or for people in need. And so just, I wanted to get people's thoughts on that. Um, I know Cory's run some of the numbers, we'd have to work it out more, but I thought it would be worth just seeing how people felt about that issue as well. Um, I think those were the, the main ones.
Okay. Any thoughts? Janet?
I'm fine with the idea of, of saying that we're prepared to try it as a trial. Um, I have some concerns about the giving, sort of providing allowances for, as people's, people in need. I don't know how you're gonna, it just, I don't, it's just a complication, it could make it really cumbersome, I think. And, and the senior pricing, I get the impression is taking into consideration the, the fact that income is often limited. I mean, it's ten dollars proposed for the sticker fee, which is almost nothing. But, um, that, so I have reservations. I feel as if, uh, just the much-produced sticker fee is pretty low, pretty generous. Um, and my concern about sort of tinkering with the pricing for the bags or whatever, or just making them free is then how do you know? And not, not that we have people who will exploit it, but, you know, I just don't know. I worry about the, just the enforceability of it and then the fact that it, it, I don't know, maybe it's not really necessary, it might not be fair, so anyhow.
I think the, if I'm not mistaken, I think the proposal was that, um, Laura Ducharme and/or, um, I can't think of her name, but they had senior center...
Yeah, Beth Hurley Hutchinson.
I'm sorry?
Bev Hutchins.
Bev, thank you. Um, that they would control them. It's not like they'd just be out in a stack or any, yeah, available to anyone. It would have to be kind of neat, but...
I would also include the Veteran Service Officer.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I've had a conversation with Laura about it. I mean, right now Laura, as, as many of you are aware, because of, of donations she receives for the SERVE program, uh, gives out both food cards and gas cards to people in need. So she already kind of has a system. You know, in talking to her, one of the issues that has, has come up to her over the years was really the sticker cost itself, and she didn't really have any mechanism to deal with that. So I think if we're gonna look at some kind of assistance for those in need, that we should come up between herself, Bev, and, and Jim, uh, and, and come up with a kind of a comprehensive approach for both sticker and, and, and bag system.
Okay. So would people be comfortable then? Cause I, you know, obviously it's, it's kind of a weird situation where we're doing the, um, you know, the non-binding resolution, but then we're, we're working out some of the kinks afterwards, cause it's not a program until we enact it. So I'm wondering if maybe I could just say something along the lines of, you know, we're responding to concerns and working, you know, with the Town Manager and with the Engineering Department and with Laura and, and other people to, to come up with something to respond to people who have a financial concern. And keep it slightly vague, but, you know, acknowledging that we're hearing those concerns and responding to them without the specific details, cause I just don't know that there's enough time. I mean, this is our last public meeting before town meeting, so...
Yeah, it's, yeah, you don't want to get too specific, cause, you know, people might, you can't promise people stuff. You can say that you're considering it, you're aware of the concerns, but yeah. Um, but it is, it is, we haven't done this before. And even if everybody were on board and, and it went through with, you know, without any kind of opposition, you, we still probably would find that we're making adjustments as the program actually rolls out, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was, I was looking at Franny first, sorry.
I'll be quick. I, I would support definitely. I mean, it's fine with me to, because we can look at this at any time.
Not only can you, you have to.
Um, I, I would like to see from things I've heard, people, people's concerned, I definitely want to see us look into a method. Um, but I feel confident that it can become so, it doesn't have to be determined exactly before town meeting.
Okay.
And I'm also, um, I like the idea of calling it a trial, but I understand that it is a trial by definition.
So a whole trial as well.
Anyway, so, I, yes.
Peter, I would just say, um, I, I agree with Janet that the issue of cost for, you know, or helping people who can't afford the cost is really separate from pay-as-you-throw. I mean, it's, this, most people would be paying less even if you're paying more. Um, if we don't do it now, I don't see that connected necessarily. We might want to help people, and that's fine. And you can tell town meeting we're looking at that, um, but I don't see it connected with this particular issue. So, um, and I think that's a good idea that we do look at that, and maybe it's just, you know, grants that, uh, social services people give out rather than providing, you know, cheaper stickers, but, um, or bags, uh, but, um, you know, the resolution issue is, is interesting. Um, well, there was another issue, first of all, that came up when we were at the Council on Aging, just in terms of seniors, uh, you know, if you're sixty, you're eligible for services at the Council on Aging. You have to be sixty-five in order to get the reduced sticker, so seniors between sixty and sixty-five will get, you know, the reduced cost between the normal two-hundred-and-ten dollars and the proposed hundred dollars, I guess, so, um, that was just a little twist and, and we're learning as we go along here. Um, it is a resolution, certainly I don't think legally town meeting can, can take away from this selectman our, our statutory authority to set fees for an enterprise fund like the transfer station. We may, I, I said, and clearly I assume everyone agrees, that, um, we're gonna honor the sense of town meeting, um, and if town meeting says it's not a good idea, I'm assuming that's what the selectmen will do, um, if they say it is a good idea. I'm assuming that's what the selectmen will do. Now, if we look at it again every year, we've already gone to town meeting, if, for instance, next year we decide, well, it's not working and we don't want to keep going with it, we might want to go back to town meeting again and propose that. I mean, we're always, town meeting is always ahead of when, you know, we would cha, make the change, so, um, but we may be committing ourselves to going back to town meeting just as a process thing if we change it. Maybe if we just change the fees, we don't do that, but, but it's an interesting concept that, uh, if we decided to do away with it because we didn't think it was working or tweak it in certain ways that make it a lot different, we might want to go back and ask town meeting to bless that again in the future, so, um, but I do think it is important to make clear to town meeting that it's, it's, it's in legal terms, a non-binding resolution, although the selectmen certainly are committed to honoring the sense of town meeting, so.
All right, the, uh, the only thing I doubt is that, remember this modification is, um, it's a fee structure, so we're, we're trying to cover the expenses at the transfer station globally. And a combination of sticker prices and bag prices is what we need to do to accommodate or to accomplish that. When, when it all comes down to, um, reevaluating it each year, one of the biggest evaluators is, are we covering our expenses? Because that's all, this is a fee. This is a fee. However you, however you kind of frame it, whether it be in the bag cost or whether it be in the sticker cost, the total has to cover our expenses. That's, that's what it boils down to. So I do believe there will be tweaks in this thing because we're trying, we're kind of extrapolating information and, and making some assumptions on, on personal habits that may or may not occur. And so we're gonna have to take a look in a year's time when, when this board is sitting on the decision and Cory comes before us and says, "We exceeded what we thought, it was gonna, we're taking, we're actually taking in more revenue than we can, than where our expenses are, then we're gonna have to figure out a way to reduce that. If it's more, or if we're less, then we're gonna have to increase it." That's always gonna be on the table. That's always on the table, because it's fee for service. I mean, it's a fee to cover the service. Not, not for the seniors, not for the average citizen, not for businesses, it's to cover the transfer station costs. So I just put that out there because each year you're gonna have the same conversation come up again and again. Whether it's, whether we keep the bags in place, if we, we go ahead and, and authorize at town meeting to do this process and put the bags in place, and then we tweak it the following year, uh, I doubt very much that what we would do is we would say, okay, well, now we're gonna abandon the bag project. We're probably gonna make price difference, price changes. It's either gonna work as a process or it's not gonna work as a process, in which case then you can make changes accordingly. But I, as far as the changing it on town meeting floor, I don't have a problem with calling it, you know, a, a trial period. It implies guilt, so...
No, I, yeah, I'm not saying to amend the, the article, I'm just saying in my presentation that I all refer to it as a trial period. Right. And then I'd also say, you know, to your point about the pricing, I mean, one of the benefits of pay-as-you-throw is that our, our costs are, are better tied to our expenses in, or, or expenses are better tied to our revenue in that the sticker now covers the operating expenses, which we'll know ahead of time, cause we know what the staff costs and what we're building in for capital. And then the bags cover the cost of removing that trash, whereas right now you're trying to figure out all three of those things in one sticker price, which is a harder thing to do. So, one of the, one of the benefits of pay-as-you-throw makes it a bit easier.
Jeff, well, I mean, we've all endorsed it. It's not like we're, we're not arguing here for or against it.
There might be people watching. Trying to sell it wherever it can.
That, that this is a, a new process and, and there may be things that we have to tweak along the way. Uh, but that's part and parcel to any new process, you know, you wanna, you wanna make improvements. So if we find that something's working particularly well, we may want to increase it. If we find something's not working so well, we may want to, you know, wean it. Um, but I don't have any problem, I haven't heard anyone here. Yes, Franny?
No, I had, I had a question I wanted to ask Jim Snyder Grant, who knows everything about this, or I could ask you, Katie.
Jim might be able to answer, yeah. Go ahead. One of us will be able to.
But if Jim answers it, he has to go to the microphone, which means he has to get up.
Well, I'll ask, I, I, one of, part of this I've asked Jim a while ago, and I, I just sort of wanted to get it on the table as open. The two questions are, do trash and recycling total tend to go down, um, in towns that do this? And I wanted to know if they did, how much of that could be people changing how they do trash, getting it picked up at home? So I want to know how that changed.
So you mean at the transfer stations for towns that switch, so the first question, at the transfer station for towns that switch to pay-as-you-throw, do both trash and recycling go down?
Yeah, the total. The reason I'm asking is, cause like Mike's pointing out, that we need to make up the money to pay for what we're putting out. And I want to know if that's expected to drop.
So the trash totals go down, your, your municipal solid waste goes down, and your recycling tends to go up? Um, but recycling for us is more or less a break-even or a slight, small revenue generating stream. So there's not real concern there. But your trash totals go down. Um, and then what was the second question?
Well, if, how much of that? I was just wondering, if it does go down, could it be that people aren't bringing their trash to the transfer station?
They're going to curbside?
Right, right. So I just wanted to know if that's been looked at.
So it's a trickier question, but the, the, the numbers that, um, so the, one way to answer is that they see, the towns that switch to pay-as-you-throw see the average municipal solid waste per household go down. So that's based on the number of users of the transfer station, right? So even if there were, and they, and they don't tend to see a decrease or in any dramatic way of the number of transfer station users. So there's not a marked number of people switching to, to curbside. I can't guarantee that there aren't people that were doing curbside one year, and now that there's pay-as-you-throw, they go to, to the transfer station, people using the transfer station go to curbside. I don't know why that would happen, but I can't say that it's not happening. Um, you know, you can't, I can't guarantee that. It's very likely not, um, but, but based on, and then, um, so the number of transfer station users does not drop in towns that adopt pay-as-you-throw, and however the average municipal solid waste per household that's using the transfer station does go down, and it goes down by forty percent. So it's significant, which is a good thing.
Okay. And the last thing I would close with that is that, um, I know we're using other towns that have gone through this as our, kind of our, our example.
So not using specific towns in the presentation?
No, 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 no. But what I mean is in general, we're using pay at towns versus to, as an example. And the towns, no town is so unique. So even if we're not spot-on with what's happened, even if it wasn't forty percent, it's thirty-eight percent or forty-two percent, that, that's, that's where you get a variance town to town. But I don't think, if you, if you know anything about data analysis, the larger the number, the, the more accurate. So the more towns that we're looking at with this, uh, if they've seen or experienced the volume diminish, then it's very likely as we're gonna mirror the same thing, because we mirror the same populace.
So it's a hundred and forty-four towns in Massachusetts that have done it? And I think it's a forty percent drop over them? Maybe forty-eight percent?
Forty-eight.
Well, forty-eight, forty-four. I was trying to do that math.
You split the difference.
Forty-four. It's forty-eight with certain towns.
Average.
Uh, but forty-four. So it, it works.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So do you need formal guidance or?
No, I just wanted to get a sense of the board, cause it was the last time we could do it in an open meeting.
Yeah. Now, is there, I know I already sent my comments to you guys, but I just was wondering if there's gonna be some plan to explain how the enterprise fund works. I mean, because I, I really got the impression that people, a lot of people go to the mic and complain, don't realize that the other users are basically subsidizing their cash.
Yeah. And so you, you can get a sneak preview of the presentation, or it's been markedly changed since the forum.
That's all right, I'll wait until town meeting.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean at the...
She's a captive audience, why do you want to watch it twice?
I mean, presumably if you're at the Legal Women Voters, uh, Warren meeting on Thursday, so I'm gonna do the presentation then and welcome feedback from that. I'm, I'm doing it as kind of a, a dry run, so, um, but yeah, yes, part of it's explaining kind of how things work now and then what's gonna, how things will work under pay-as-you-throw.
Yeah, and I'd like, I'd like all of you, if you're doing any kind of presentation, uh, do some dry-run presentations so you have a sense of time, cause that's the question that's gonna come up. From Mr. McKenzie, he's gonna want to know how long you need, so, and, and he will not suffer fools, so don't, don't tell him you need four minutes and then be up there twelve minutes later, you know?
Well, you have to be honest, though, if you're presenting something that's sort of controversial, you have to be honest. Okay, my presentation will take this. Q and A could take five hours, but you know...
Please stop five hours. And a little question for that.
Please, I want to get to the end of this town meeting. All right, are there any other articles that are at issue that people feel as though they're, um, the CPC is still moving forward their, um, their slate? I don't think they've had any changes, correct?
Uh, right. We, we had our meeting, uh, on Thursday and, uh, went through the presentation and Peter Ashton will be, he's the chair of the CPC, will be presenting and, uh, yeah, the slate is the same, yeah.
Okay. Yes?
I just thought I would like to clarify, I, I would love if Steve would clarify for people how tied or untied the, um, proposed meals excise tax is to any expenditures or not? And what happens if that doesn't pass with expenditures? Cause I think people are sometimes unclear about that.
Well, they, they can't be tied to an expenditure to general revenue. So in the ALG plan, it's in the general revenues. What happens if it doesn't pass? Well, presumably there, there's several things that could happen. One, we may have some excess, uh, local receipts that could cover it. Uh, we also, um, are not under the ALG plan, uh, taxing to the full extent of two and a half, so that could go up a little bit, might by two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, but it, you can't really tie it to any specific program, so, um, that's kind of a misconception. I mean, I, I know I confuse people when I presented the budget, but that was mainly because from the FinCom point of view, they had said no new initiatives without a source of revenue, but technically to general revenue, you can't tie it to a specific thing.
Okay. Yes?
Well, what, so if the meals tax doesn't pass though, do you think your recommendation, if you had to cut the budget, would be not to hire the Economic Development Officer and not do the cross, the new shuttle?
Well, the Economic Development Officer has been removed from the budget. Uh, what we have is a Director of Land Use Management and Economic, and I really think it's important for the town to have that position, so I would not recommend cutting that.
So you, and what about the, the shuttle?
Um, you know, I, I, once again, I think the shuttle is now sixty thousand to seventy thousand dollars. I, I think that, uh, you know, through perhaps additional local receipts and things like that, we'd be able to cover that.
Okay. You'll have to remind me where, I thought it was like two, two-thirty or something, where the economic...
Well, uh, sixty or seventy thousand is, is being redirected from the MBTA assessment. So originally it was a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's because of the fact that this is not an increase in, in an existing route, it's a brand-new route. So therefore, we can tap the MBTA assessment where we couldn't just for our dial-a-ride or the existing rail shuttle, um, they don't allow that. But because this is something brand-new, they do allow us to tap that, so.
Yeah.
Yes, Jim?
Since we're talking about the meals tax proposal, I have been, Franny actually has been helping too, because EDC is her, her committee, um, been touching base with different people, trying to get their sense of the meals tax. I know that it's sort of almost knee-jerk for business people to oppose it, but, um, there are, you know, there's vast experience across the state. It's like pay-as-you-throw, I, I mean, pushing whatever, two-hundred communities have adopted the local excise option, and they have not experienced any blowback. Uh, there's, businesses are fine with it. It's an inconsequential amount of a total bill, um, so anyhow, but I have, have agreed to attend the EDC's meeting on April second and hear from not only the members who pretty uniformly individually have let me know that they don't agree with it, and, but possibly some restaurant owners, I don't know what's gonna happen, but it just, this is pretty, the arguments that I've heard are pretty...
Weak.
They're, and they're consistent across the state. I mean, every time it comes up, people raise these issues, and they say it's gonna drive business... but possibly some restaurant owners, I don't know what's going to happen, but it just, this is pretty, the arguments that I've heard are pretty...
Weak.
They're, and they're consistent across the state, I mean, every time it comes up, people raise these issues, and they say it's going to drive business away, it's going to do this, it's going to, and it doesn't happen.
It's not going to, for one, all the surrounding communities are already involved.
Well, I just say, yeah, the thing is, okay, if you really...
So where are they going to drive to? Are they going to drive twenty-five miles to save seventy-five cents?
You're going to end up at your house, in your kitchen, cooking, that's how you avoid the local meals tax, but you know, anyhow, so I don't know how my presentation is, I haven't pulled it together, so I don't know, I have to present at the league thing on, on Thursday, it may be pretty, pretty smart in slides, because I haven't had, been working with, I've been working with the finance guys, and so I don't have, you know, I've got to work on it.
Yeah, one, one of the things that I know was a misconception was that this is going to cause additional work for the, the restaurants, and it doesn't, this, they have to do this reporting to the DOR anyway, this is not something that is in addition to, this is just a different amount, so it's, it, it creates no more work for them, and three-quarters of one percent means seventy-five cents on a hundred-dollar bill.
And it makes an even seven percent out of meals tax.
Instead of trying to calculate the six-point-two-five, et cetera, but, yes, Peter?
This was really a radical idea when Patrick first brought this along in two thousand and eight, to allow local cities and towns to increase their revenue, there was a hotel tax also, but it's not an increase in the general meals tax, which then gets sent to the state, and we have to beg them to give us a portion of it back to, you know, help us, which they've been cutting and cutting, at least we get to use the money to fund our own town services and how to spend it in appropriate ways, so that's the point I would make.
Yeah, and we, and back in two thousand and eight, I was on the board, and we, we chose not to invoke it at the time, because there was some concern about businesses and, and average citizens were going through all kinds of problems, and because of our revenue situation, we do, we were not in need of it, so increasing taxes, the tax arbitrarily, but now we're determining that we are developing a need for this, if we want to have services that are not carried purely on the back of, 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 I mean, not excise tax, but property taxes, then it's a, you know, an easier way to do it. People who are not from our town pay the meals tax, in which case they're paying for us, so good deal, but anyway.
We're eating in all those other towns that have it, so, you know, this is a chance for all those other people.
Come in here.
In our, in our restaurants to give back some of the money.
Leave a couple of quarters on the table for us. Okay. Franny, transportation seems to be a moving target here, do you have that kind of firmed up in terms of what you're going to be talking about?
Yeah, I met last week, and I'll meet again with the Budget Committee, including Doug Halli, who is helping, we won't have an exact perfect route, but we have proposed routes that Doug looked at, I'd like Transportation Committee to look at it, and I know Mike looked at Doug's. But the general idea is that the beauty of the Transportation Enterprise Fund is that all the transportation programs will now be listed together, both income and funding, which will make it a lot clearer for everybody, where it comes from and what it goes to, because it's always very confusing, because we get some from, some service from the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and some from taking our MBTA assessment and running it through them, and then different vans owned by different people, some by the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, some by Transaction, which runs Minute Van for us, and so, and it's dispatched out of Cross Town Connect, so I think everything will become clearer by having this, and the big difference in service is that we will now, we're proposing within the Transportation Enterprise Fund to have a fixed route, and the nice thing about that fixed route is, first of all, people have been asking for it for many different reasons for years, you wonder, when are you going to get a bus that will actually stop at certain times, so I don't have to call ahead and arrange for it, and there's only one or two people going this way, and one or two people going this way, and, and I ask people, I say, would you be willing to walk a half-mile to get to it, and people are, and if you can't, you can call the dial-a-ride services, or you can, what I'm, haven't gotten straight is whether this is a flexible fixed route or not, some fixed routes will go off a quarter-mile or half-mile to pick somebody up, and that's built into the schedule, and I haven't clarified.
I don't think so, I, time-wise, if in fact you're, you're using this to accommodate rail, using it more like a rail shuttle, I don't, I think if you start to flex, what happens is you end up losing your entire schedule, and unfortunately, the train is, is on a fixed schedule, so one of the advantages, if in fact we can get it more as a rail shuttle, I mean, if we could run two shuttles in the morning and two in the afternoon, that takes seven, you know, that takes as much as seventy cars off the road, which you do Main Street right now, so if anyone's got, you know, complaints about Route 27 having too many cars, here's a way you can pull seventy of them off, you know, so.
And it also, that's what I was going to say, is people in West Acton have this advantage now, I can do things like pick up my husband's car at the station and then text him and tell him I, I took the car, take Minute Van home, you know, because he can take it to West Acton and then walk, and people do that, and I've spoken to people who, you know, have gotten rid of their second car, because they don't have to bring a car to the station, and it's ridiculous that we require people to bring a car across town, they don't have to, and so this fixed route will essentially expand the rail shuttle program to go to the other side of town, and I've also heard from a lot of people who lose their job or, or can't go to a job interview because their car needs repairs and they can't afford it, who live along Route 2A very often, and this will give them options. The only disadvantage is that it's only going to come about once an hour, and I know from talking to people in Lexington, that's sometimes a deterrent, you know, if you don't have all afternoon to go do your errands, it might be hard, but if you really need it, you can plan around it and use it, and I know I would use it.
Considering Lexington's budget is a hundred and eighty-five million dollars, and ours is ninety, that should tell you that they can do twice as much, so.
Well, they, they forever support it, and they forever enjoy it, so that's all I have to say about that.
Are we planning to meet before town meeting, we're going to have our own meeting?
Yes, as usual, what we'll do is, on the first evening, we will meet, and we will not adjourn, basically, we'll, and we'll meet each day prior to town meeting. Have we been, you want to meet at six, correct? Steve, six to seven?
Probably the safest.
Yeah, so, so we'll meet, usually the, we get a room up at the, I want to say the Concordian, but no. A room up at the high school, and then basically we'll meet there, it's a public meeting, I mean, it's a regular selectman's meeting, so you're welcome to come along and watch us. Yes, we have had people there, so. So, so in answer to the question, yes, we'll have a meeting on April 6th, April 7th, if we need it, for April 8th, or 9th, or 10th, or May, May 7th, May 28th. There you go, and, so we will be getting together again, this is not the, the last meeting, so. Okay, and I sent you all the, from Acton TV was nice enough to forward me the, the file for, if you want to look at last year's town meeting to reminisce.
Has it not been available until now, or is there something?
No, 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 they've gotten so many demands for the on-demand, that they have to limit the amounts that they can have on there, so what had happened was, when we had the Fall Town Meeting, they had the Fall Town Meeting playing, but not the annual from last year, and they're very different, because of course, this is all about finance, and the Fall Town Meeting was about the Acton Nursing Service and whatnot, so.
I hadn't even thought about looking at the video of last year's town meeting.
Keen you're having trouble sleeping, you know?
Thank God.
All right, and then I think we've, we have some, the land acquisitions have been pulled, so, and of course now, as the Brookside issue comes up, we'll do some work prior to town meeting, to make sure that we're acknowledging Mr. Nolan's problem, and I don't know that there's anything else that's particularly tricky. I think they're going to be pretty, it's going to be a pretty beige town meeting, sorry, folks. Oh, no, 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 it's, no, 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 FinCom.
Nothing contra, did you say both of the land acquisitions are pulled? Okay, Mr., the, the sad sack parking, yeah, neither on the, neither on a warrant, we just got the appraisal, was no time to meet with the owner before town meeting.
All right, then, then I don't see any reason why we have to hang out here. Oh, Selectments Reports, I forgot to turn it over, I didn't have my check mark there. Yeah.
On that question of the land acquisitions, can I just ask a question of Steve?
Of course.
If they, if the appraisals do come and the town has an interest, that would be determined by it being brought up to the Board of Selectmen, and we would come up with an interest, and then there could be a special town meeting? Okay.
Correct, we haven't received the appraisal on the Magoon property at all, so that's not the reason that was pulled.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so since you asked the question, you get to go first with your Selectman's Report. Uh-oh, she's bringing out a book, maybe I'll start at the other end, we can, we can grind you down.
March 10th, Mike and I attended a legislative luncheon given by the Massachusetts Regional Transit Authority Organization, it's the MRTA, MARTA, Massachusetts Association of Our Regional Transit Authorities, that was organized for legislators at the Omni Parker House, and I can really, could see by listening to the presentations, the conflict between the needs of the populous Boston region and, and the MBTA as a destination and as a large residential population, and the different needs of the suburban and rural communities who are served by the regional transit authorities, and often are going into the Boston area too. In Acton, we, we happen to touch the metropolitan, the MBTA, the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, the Monmouth Tucusit, and the Metro West Regional Transit Authority towns, we're very much on the nexus. I'm sort of curious how Mike would sum up the opinions that were shared by the House and Senate Chairs on Transportation, Strauss and McGee, respectively, and also the new Mast dot Director Pollock, on funding changes, they were talking about funding changes since Governor Baker came in, and I couldn't sum it up for this. I saw Jamie Eldridge there, and I thank him for attending, there was a big crowd, so I don't know who else of our legislators were present. On March 16th, we went to a St. Patrick's Day event in Lowell, thanks to Jim Scanlon of the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and enjoyed a night of boiled dinner, Irish music, step dancing, and very funny roasts between the City Council Mayors of Lowell, the City Manager, Senator Donahue, Governor Baker, and the State Treasurer Deb Goldberg. It was very useful, I found, for continuing to get to know our mother city in the Regional Transit Authority world. We're on the outskirts of the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and so it's always a question of how much we should know about the shape of our region toward there. And thinking about that, I recently attended a meeting at UMass Lowell regarding their shuttle buses, and I often hear of local Acton residents that need transportation up to Middlesex in Bedford or Lowell or UMass Lowell, so if people do have those needs and they're listening, they should be vocal, because if a lot of common need is recognized, it's easier to seek funding to create new transit options. March 17th, the Commission on Disability, we're getting ready for our April 29th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Resource Fair, about Acton resources that are available to people with disabilities and their families. We also had a visit from a woman who had a disagreement with a store owner regarding a particular visit to the store with some children with autism that she was taking care of. She's a very frequent customer at the store, and the commission clearly could hear the mixed feelings and rightful opinions of both sides, and I think both the business owner and this person also could see both sides, so the commission didn't get involved further, you know, to say it was a disability issue, but it definitely spurred our awareness about the difficulties of finding places in town and local activities for people with varying levels of autism, where behavior can be off-putting or confusing to others, yet is a part of that person's nature, and, and of the pressures businesses are under to cater to disparate customers' needs, so it was very good to pique our interest in conversation about that. It's very interesting for me to be on both the Commission on Disabilities and the Economic Development Committee, as both committees deal with town, client, and employee relationships with business, so. March 21st, we're thinking about, I know this isn't the town committee, but speaking of disability in town and what makes Acton great, this weekend I attended and worked backstage at Open Door Theater, which is presenting Shrek last, this weekend and this coming weekend, and they have shows that are accessible to people with low vision, because it's audio-described, I think that's next Saturday night, and one yesterday that was American Sign Language, what's it called? Well, they did, I forget the verb, anyway, it was good for people who are hard of hearing, and there's one specifically for people with autism, where they allow you to use certain materials and, you know, make noise and get up if you have to, and all.
And lower the volume.
Yes, you know, make it easier sensorially. I think it's one of Acton's gems that keep people like me, who like culture and community involvement in town, it attracts participants from far and wide, and it's a feel-good organization with whole families involved on and off the stage, so I thought I would mention it as part of my report. March 19th, I attended an Economic Development Committee in the town of Westford to see how they function, and it was really interesting, they have a really active group, including several retired business owners, and they have a related group, the Business Association, that's also very active, and I spoke to a select person about that town's experience with the local options meals excise tax, which they implemented in 2011, and it was all positive. I also stopped at a restaurant, I asked for an independent place to go for breakfast after, and they've been there for about fifteen years or so, and the owner said they had no relations, no issues related to the implementation of the meals tax, it's about fifteen cents on a twenty-dollar restaurant bill, they said the biggest problem they had was the regulars who suddenly noticed the change in their thing they always got every single time they came in, of a few cents, and so they had to explain it, and I'm hoping to stop at other restaurants that have been around for a long time and ask what their experience is. I heard from an official in Littleton that they also didn't have negative effects, they get about fifty-nine thousand, I guess we're expected to get about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, I don't have to report on, and that same day, March 19th was a busy day, I attended the Acton Economic Development Committee, which I'm on, we continue discussing our goals, and we hope to finish that up soon so they can come back to us and really get back on the map, I feel like that committee has not been, had a clear charge from us, or for ourselves even, what exactly we're doing, and so I think that will be very useful to be done with that. Restaurant owners, we're inviting Janet to come on April 2nd to the next EDC meeting, and restaurant owners from Acton are being invited so they can hear about the meals excise tax at the meeting, and we had disagreement on the committee there about whether it makes sense to invite restaurant owners from the nearby towns who have the tax, such as Westford, Littleton, and Concord, so the hope would be that they could share their experience of the town adopting the tax from before and after, but we had strong disagreement about whether that was appropriate or not. We heard also about the ongoing issues at Brookside Shops in Acton, and while we sympathize with the homeowner having real issues with trash pickup and screening issues, which were, we heard tonight at Citizens Concerns, and they have been heard at the Planning Board meeting, the committee voted in support of the zoning change that's coming to town meeting, believing it will allow businesses in Brookside Shops to deal with town departments more efficiently if the mall is rezoned as limited business. March 22nd, yesterday was the Acton Conservation Trust Annual Meeting, right here, and it included, oh, I meant to wipe off the table, it included...
Please don't tell them why. Please don't tell them why.
Included an animal presentation by Rick Roth. You know, all sorts of animal parts flying everywhere. It was fantastic. The Fisher was in a really bad mood and quite fierce-looking. He quickly put the Fisher back in the box. But there was a more cooperative box turtle, snapping turtle, flying squirrel, groundhog, and gray fox. And I don't remember what else, but it was really interesting. And there was a presentation of the, oh, skunk. I knew there were more. And there was, they also, Acton Conservation Trust presented Carol Holly Conservation Volunteer Award to Nan Millet. So congratulations to her. And I did some interviews of Josh Fischel for the EDC and Ellen Feinsand for the Council on Aging. And I recommended those appointments for associate membership and Peter Duran for full membership on the Council on Aging. That's all.
Okay. Janet?
This will be shorter because Franny touched bases, touched...
Yeah, she checked some places.
The Acton Boxwork Cultural Council, we just recommended two applicants for appointment. There is one more applicant pending, probably that will be pending until the opening, there's an opening come June 30th. The Acton Water District Annual Meeting of what, for, to which all residents in Acton can go, regardless of whether you're a water district customer or not, was on Wednesday, March 18th. They had it slated for seven to, I think, seven to eight and it went under an hour. It was just done. I was really quite envious anyhow. Fincom is meeting tomorrow night, I think they're talking more about town meeting prep. Design Review Board, I did hear from the planning director with his comments about the committee's latest proposal to expand their authority to include things that are in the planning board's purview, such as subdivisions. I mean, there are some issues because the authority there is very limited. So, I will aim to get the discussion before this board sometime after town meeting. Minuteman Tech, I think four of us here were, went to the Minuteman Tech presentation on the 11th about the various building options from bare minimum repairs to build new and demolish the existing. It's just a really complicated issue, as we've discussed before, because they're, they've gotten a warning from the state due to the deficient building condition. They're trying to preserve this 40% reimbursement rate that they would get from the state if they build. But it has, it lapses next June. And they also are still working on getting approval of the amended agreement, which is six members shy of unanimity, so. And then the question is what happens if that gets approved? What happens to the district? Do people withdraw and then who's left? And are they going to get new members or whatever? And what will our town's share of the cost be in the newly reconfigured district? The Regional Finance Oversight Subcommittee will be meeting on the 26th just before the League of Women Voters Warrant Meeting. On other fronts, I think three of us went to the STAR event, paying tribute to long-term employees on the 12th. It was really nice. Mr. Gowing did a fine job of meeting and greeting and paying tribute to the employees. Three of us, I think, Katie, Franny, and I, attended the Steve Barron Memorial Service on Sunday, the 15th, at Nigox Wood Clubhouse. It was packed. Very, very nice service and actually some opportunities to laugh. There were things about Steve that most of us didn't know because he didn't talk about himself. There was a meeting on the 17th involving the town's compliance with the bigger picture Environmental Protection Agency stormwater regulations. It's not just the bylaw requirement, but it's a broader set of requirements. There was a meeting of the department directors and town council with Jeff Clymer representing the Water Resources Advisor Committee participating via conference phone. There's an agreement that for EPA's purposes, you really need to have a separate set of kind of standards that the town is going to abide by, so you can just hand it to them. But at the same time, you need to, for practical reasons, integrate whatever those standards are into the existing kind of sets of bylaws. So I think council is going to work with the different departments to try to help that integration. So that'll be, that'll be good. Safety Net met on the 19th. 19th was a big day for...
19th was a busy day.
There was a presentation by Allison Tarmey, who is a regular at those meetings and is involved in the Domestic Violence Services Network. They have offices, among other places, in Concord. They have a hotline. There's information about the network on the town's website under the police department. But they assist only domestic violence victims, 12% of whom are men. So it's not just women, but obviously it's predominantly women. They work with police departments. And when they get grants, they put the money into training police on things like recognizing signs of domestic violence. There are a lot of challenges for victims, among other things, one, they're reluctant to get help. Two, then when they seek help, there are difficulties if they are looking for shelter, getting transportation there, and then getting their kids out of school. And often the shelters that they get referred to are some distance from where they are because it's an effort to reduce the risk that they're going to be tracked down by the abuser. But they're just, kind of, just very disturbing to hear about these stories. And it's nice to know that there's a network to help these people. As Franny mentioned, the League Candidates Forum was on the 19th and three of us, Katie, Franny, and I were there. Interesting to hear about the school committee candidates. And everybody else was uncontested, but we did hear from our, our perhaps future colleague a little bit. The MMA, Mass Municipal Association, had a breakfast on March 20th. Peter was there as well at the Lexington Library. And Katie McHugh of the MMA led discussion along with the Lexington Municipal Reps. They covered a wide range of things. A number of the state senate, well, there were a number of state senators there and Cory Atkins was there from Concord. They talked about, among other things, the governor's proposed early retirement, bless you, incentive option for a number of state employees. It would add five years of age or creditable service so that they could retire early. There's no plan to extend this option to the municipalities. There's some concern expressed by the state senators about the loss of senior-level employees, possibly up to 12% of staff. And then the diminution in services as a result. Senator Donalyn was there and he said that early retirement doesn't work, that the state really needs to address the underlying obligations now and not try to kind of reduce it. He understands why the governor's proposing that or looking at that, but he is concerned that in towns that have tried early retirement, they're not doing well financially. It's better to sort of bite the bullet and deal with the obligation. Snow and ice budgets. The state senate has a pending proposal for an extension of the deficit to five years. And Katie McHugh also mentioned the possibility of FEMA money for some communities. There was mention of the ongoing effort of some communities, including Acton and Burlington, to pursue home room petitions to get a civil service. Burlington's, I guess, effort is getting somewhat bogged down. So, the MMA is prepared to nudge the whole process to get it moving. The GIC, recently, I guess, you might know about this already, Mike. They went through some plan design changes to raise, among other things, raise their rates, which were too low, low and were contributing to the deficit, $190 million due to GIC. And I guess Katie wanted to make sure that people knew that because municipalities can use the GIC rates as benchmarks. There was some talk about OPEP reform. Governor Patrick's proposal obviously didn't pass. There's continued discussion in the legislature. Under Chapter 32B, Section 9A B, I don't know if those are the right letters. Anyhow, communities have the option of charging other communities for health insurance obligations if they've got somebody who was working in another town. But, and some towns have dealt with the whole issue by having restrictive bylaws that limit their local obligation. There is a Supreme Judicial Court decision pending on the issue of whether these restrictive bylaws are enforceable. And it's, some people were theorizing at this meeting that the court might invalidate the local restrictions and say, hey, you've got the option of charging other towns. There was a bit of talk about the proposed referendum to amend the state constitution to provide for graduated income tax. The proposal has failed before, but the proponents think that the increasing income disparity might increase the chances of success. The MMA historically hasn't been involved or taken a position. Also talk about the MBTA and what to do about it. Senator Barrett said, need to invest money, but the governor has taken no new taxes pledge. Whether he'll back off of that remains to be seen. Talk about Minuteman Tech, which continues to be controversial. And a lot of member towns are represented at, represented at that breakfast. Municipal tax bond exemption, I don't know much about this, but I assume it's of concern to municipalities. Still under discussion in Washington. And finally, liquor license, some people were saying, why can't municipalities control the number? A number of the state senators or reps that agree. They would like to relinquish the control, but they say some of their colleagues don't want to give up that authority. Franny's already mentioned the Acton Conservation Trust Annual Meeting. The 495 Metro West Partnership Water Resources Committee will meeting, be meeting Thursday, oh geez, this Thursday, the 26th. Everything's happening this week. There will be a panel discussion about the latest draft EPA permit, the regular, about stormwater that were issued last fall. And we've already talked about the warrant meeting and my attending the EDC meeting. If anybody's out there at this point listening, if you want to email me comments from, if you're a restaurant owner and you have something to say and you want to say it before the second, you can email me, call the town manager's office and get my email address. And finally, I've been getting feedback from the Douglas Riedelaw Program. Packets of letters came in the mail. I just got some more from, but there was a packet from Ms. Ritter's third grade class that came in the mail. Very interesting to see what they remembered about the stories. I read a series of stories in a book about the Sieges, but there were four, three other stories. And each student had...
Star Billy or other?
Each, each child remembered something different, had something different to say. They're hoping that I return. They all write well, the third graders, and they have really nice penmanship, which I noticed because my penmanship has really deteriorated. But, from one letter, "It's cool that you are basically in charge of Acton." And that's it.
I just want to know why we didn't get invited.
Yeah, it's my favorite day of the year and I didn't get invited back.
I didn't get invited back either. Must have said something.
I know. I did read an accidentally racy book last year, but...
Fifty Shades of...
I don't know, just a bathtub, king in a bathtub.
All right, come on, Katie. Speaking, there's another shade of pink.
Zoned out here. Janet mentioned the Minuteman Building Committee meeting that many of us attended. That was the same night as the Historical Commission, so I missed that. As Janet also mentioned, I attended the STAR Dinner, which was a great event to congratulate our town employees, including Dean, who had 40 years, which is a pretty remarkable feat. And Janet also mentioned the memorial service for Steve Barron, which was, it was a very nice event and it was a really beautiful way to remember somebody who is dedicated so much to our community. And that same day, I attended the Gold Star or helped give out the Gold Star Award to a young woman in Acton. The Gold Star is the sort of highest achievement in girl scouting. So that was a really great event to recognize her accomplishments and what she had given back to our community. Janet also mentioned, maybe Franny as well, the Candidates Night. The League of Women Voters hosted to hear from people running for town office. And then later that night, the school committee met and heard about some curriculum at the curriculum programs at the elementary level and a mid-year testing pilot program at the high school. They also did the superintendent's sort of mid-year review. And they have hired a new athletic director. And that night, just been heads down, doing a lot of work on Pay as You Throw and attending a bunch of meetings and things related to that. And that's it.
Okay. Peter?
Thank you. I attended a Green Advisory Board meeting. They voted to recommend to the town manager a grant for, under the Green Communities Act, for the $250,000 that we've received in the past years and hopefully will get this year. I'll send you a link to that grant, which has now been submitted. $220,000 for school energy savings in terms of behavioral changes and upgrades in lighting and heating equipment. There was some discussion about the town's proposal, which was to change all the streetlights to LED lights, which would, was like, I think, $90,000 would have taken us over the $250,000. So what the committee decided to recommend and the town manager approved was to do half of the streetlights, the 100 watts to 50 watts, I believe, and use $30,000 of the grant and $60,000 that we have in the account that's been savings from the solar array. So that has been submitted and hopefully will be approved. I missed a meeting of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee because I was away. But there has been discussion about scheduling time with the selectmen for the consultants who are working with the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee to update the board on current plans for zoning changes and concept designs going forward. So, we'll be talking more about that after town meeting, I'm sure. The CPA again met to go over the presentation for town meeting. There's discussion about putting together a proposal to raise the CPA assessment from 1.5% to the full 3%, which would allow the town to receive a lot more reimbursement from the state. And they put some numbers together. I think there was discussion about this selectman appointing a study committee to look at that issue and make some recommendations going forward. So I'll send you a link to those preliminary numbers of what the increase would look like and we'll be talking more about that after town meeting, I'm sure, as well. Just to pick up on Franny's point about businesses dealing with people with disabilities and families with autistic individuals. I want to commend Not Your Average Joes. There was an article in The Beacon a couple of weeks ago about time they put aside to allow families with artistic children to come and have meals in the afternoon when it's a quieter time. They turn the music down, they turn the lights down. And that's a fine example of a business taking a proactive approach to dealing with people who have problems with disabilities. So, I'm hoping that that's a sign of improvement in recognition and commitment to, to address that problem. Just following up on the MMA Legislative Breakfast. On the civil service issue, apparently one member of the House has decided to hold up all home rule petitions that change anything in civil service. The senator who was at the meeting had gone over and yelled at him to tell him that you can't do that. There's this concept of home rule and just because you don't like it, doesn't mean you can hold up every bill. And took the extraordinary step of getting the senate to pass the home rule petition for Burlington or whatever and send it over to the House under some parliamentary rule that I'd never heard of before. You know, it seems to me the unions even got to be on board on this. I mean, our union is getting a huge benefit out of this. And so, I don't know if talking to the unions and asking them to bring their, you know...
Mass COPS has indicated they will, they will do some support on it.
Okay. Because our unions don't get the benefit until it passes. So, it's just kind of unbelievable. But, the other thing that Cory Atkins says was, don't count on the governor's numbers in terms of local aid. Apparently she had spoke to the House head of Ways and Means and they're looking at the...
We've got the ways, we just ain't got the means.
Right, right. So, that, that could be a problem. But, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, going back, as, as Franny said, MARTA, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Transit Authorities. That, that is the 15 regional transit authorities that are in the state, other than the MBTA. So you have the MBTA, which kind of takes care of the inner ring and the rest of the world. And some of the big players besides Senator McGee, who's the chairman, was Senate Majority Leader Harriet Chandler, who's the RTA caucus chair. The Senate President, the new Senate President, Stan Rosenberg, was there. And as she mentioned, Stephanie Pollock, the new secretary and CEO. Most of the discussion sent around funding for transit, with the greatest concern being that with the, what happened with the MBTA this past winter, there's going to be a lot of push to get more funding. And the RTAs are concerned that it will be siphoned from the RTAs to go to the MBTA. And the RTAs performed very well during this record winter and don't feel as though they should end up losing their funding because they performed well, because the MBTA did not. So, that's the thumbnail of what the finance was. St. Patty's Day, the only thing that I would say was, I loved Governor Baker's joke. They have the first Cambodian state rep in the country. They have the first Cambodian state rep in the country, Mr. Mom, and...
I love, I love the campaign when, when I was going to visit my son at UMass Lowell, vote for mom.
Yeah. And what, what Governor Baker said was, how do you go against that? So I thought it was, I thought that was the joke that stuck with me.
Actually, it was Roddy Mom's response that I thought was funny, because I think Governor Baker said, I want to work on that campaign, and he said, you're hired.
But it was funny. The, excuse me, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, discussed, discussion was around the MBTA State Implementation Plan. These include the Fairmont Line Improvement Project, Red Line/Blue Line Connector Design, and the Green Line Extension to Somerville and Medford. They also discussed their scenario planning tool and how future distribution of federal monies should be impacted by intersection improvements, complete streets, bicycle networks, and pedestrian connections, and community transportation and parking, more so than major infrastructure, which is what they've done in the past. So, they're looking to ratchet back from about 85% of their monies going to major infrastructure to about 62%. They're looking at a long-term plan, which represents about $2 billion over, until 2040, that they'll be distributing. So that's, they're, they're, they also got to talk about their, they have further defined their draft of their central vision statement and the long-range transportation plan, which will be coming up for comment, that I'll let you guys know. And the Acton Nursing Service Task Force met and subdivided their efforts into subcommittees focusing on marketing, finance, networking, referrals, and testimonials. They've done a very good job on identifying, identifying the financial impact of the nursing service over the past 15 years. Basically, what they took was the report that the DOR publishes, so that there's no question as to what monies it is, et cetera, and broke it down. And it looks like, based on the DOR numbers, the nursing service, on average, has only been losing about $17,000 per year. So, it's, which is very different than what was brought up at that special town meeting. So, I wanted to get that out there. And, because that's, that's the numbers that are reported to the state, so it's, there's no fuzzy there. But, and so, that is all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, goodnight, folks. Do we do a public face review, please? Well, because they're not supposed to know what's going to, until town meeting. So, yeah.